It's 7:00 PM. I'll call the public hearing for the Yellowstone Park Phase One Minor Subdivision to order. Anyone in favor of speaking, in favor of the Yellowstone Park Phase One Minor Subdivision? Would you come forward? Anyone opposed to the Yellowstone Park Phase One Minor Subdivision? Would you come forward? Is there any other public comment related to zoning compliance, availability of infrastructure and state level zoning regulations? Hearing none, we will adjourn the public hearing for the Yellowstone Park Phase One Minor Subdivision at 7:02 PM. We will now start the city council meeting for the July 15th, 2025, if you would stand for the plug. Okay, Jessica, if you would do the roll call.
Okay, Baker?
Here.
Coon?
Here.
Dryden?
Here.
Hedrick? Heinz? Mitchell?
Here.
Sassy?
Here.
Thompson? Ambulance? Finance? Police? Public Works?
Okay, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the July 1st, 2025 Regular Council Meeting? Okay, and a second by Jason? All in favor of approving the minutes of the July 1st, 2025 Regular Council Meeting, say aye. Any abstaining? No, okay. Next, we'll go to Old Business, so we have the Street Committee Report. I see that Joanne is not here, so the alternate for that would be... Okay, thank you.
Wednesday, July 9th, at 4:00 PM. In attendance is Rat Coon, Wynden Heinz, Mayor Dion, Katie Mills, Brandon Heidner of the Ranger. Agenda items were a street closure for 200 block of Merrill on Saturday, September 6th, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM for Culver Insurance Celebration and Open House. They will be using our park across the street from their business as well, recommended approval. No public comment adjourned at 4:02.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item of Old Business is the Cooper Committee Meeting from Wednesday, July 9th. Would you want to read that report, Rat?
Yes, Sandy Mayor, he's saying he presented it started at 4:03. Item number one, new phone system. They then informed us that City Hall Phone System is still not functioning. Mid Rivers inspected and stated that we need a new system. So at the time, Mid Rivers was working on options soon as possible and present to the mayor. The phones are not ringing, so if anybody needed getting in touch with anyone in the city, that they should email them and tell them we can get a new system in place, so that's FYI. Item number two, new backup system for the computers. Mayor Down also gave an update and stated that our existing backup tape system has completely failed. Mayor has identified two options moving forward. One is to purchase an updated tape system to replace the old one. And two is to acquire a cloud-based backup system. I stated that tape systems are outdated technology and the standards go forth with cloud system. So the committee recommended Record Center and the mayor to investigate cloud options such as Microsoft and Google, and if they confront this solution by Tuesday's council meeting, the council could vote on that option. Item number three, STIP authorization. Director of Operations Center brought forward the housekeeping item agenda. Our current STIP, which is Montana Board of Investment Short Term Investment Pool, currently has Mayor Olson and Director Schmidt as the authorized representatives of the city. So we need to update the STIP with the current personnel and choose to invest into the program. And to do so, it's a regular requirement of the evolution, so Mr. Center was going to check with the current interest rates, etc., and has a refresh on the current outlook of the program. And the city has been in this program for many years, so maybe approved regulations to update the STIP program. Item number four, longevity increase. Director Center brought forward scenarios of adjusting our pay structure. After listening to employees, he found that there is a lack of differentiation between new employees and tenured ones. Employees benefit the city possibly only makes $3.50 more an hour than a brand-new employee. The oldest or the only biggest differentiation is in longevity. So Mr. Center brought forth four scenarios, which I didn't check clear in this packet, but scenario one was status quo. Options two and three and four show different combinations for base wage increases with different longevity increases. And as much of negotiations have already been completed or close to completion, Mr. Center thought we could possibly do a small change now and work towards a full change following this. So the committee recommended a fifth scenario, which is introductory and immediate offering to employees, so that it don't interfere with mobility to weight increases. But actually, this would be an increase more than what was negotiated. So Mr. Center can give a more detailed breakdown during discussions in the business, but the Cooper Committee approved leaving base wages kind of negotiated and increase longevity to $7.50. Item number five, time clock app options. The city is scheduled to roll over to the new digital online time clock app on August 1st. Currently, there are over approximately 25 different billing codes for employees to register their time to. And that can get confusing and time-consuming for employees to have to scroll through different codes and put time towards the app. So Mr. Center brought forward an option to reduce complexity for employees based on instead of being drilled down on a granular level to reduce options to a more basic higher level. Instead of 10 different code options inside the water department, employees will just have the option of water department, for a rough example. This does not interfere with the overall budget, but may limit some detailed information for the department head to analyze later. Plan is to keep options for the time clock app at a higher level, but if the department heads need more information, Mr. Center can dial that down with more options later. It's flexible and customizable, so that's FYI. Item number five, National Night Out. The Second Annual National Night Out is once again on the same night as our August 5th Regular Council Meeting. Last year, we moved our council meeting to another night till hours anyone to attend. Mayor Dion thinks that this year we can hold our council meeting at the normal time and people will still be able to go to the National Night Out in foreign language. And so again, that's August 5th from 5:00 to approximately 8:30 at Hyatt Park, so that's FYI. Public comment, I just inquired on the Swedish corner, northwest corner, it started with Valentine, and Mr. Sims gave me his, the ascent letters, and will be bringing options and possible changes to the next ordinance committee. That was all the public comment, and adjourned at 4:46. Anybody?
All right, thank you. I just have one FYI about the phone system not working. We did have a technician from Mid Rivers come this week, and he was able to get the phones to ring, but you cannot leave a voicemail at this time. So right now, we're still limping along with our phone system, and we're considering the options of getting a whole new system, but it's going to be quite a bit more expensive than what we pay for right now. So if you do call City Hall now, the phones do ring and someone will answer it. But if you're wanting to leave a voicemail, that option isn't available right now. So that's just FYI. All right, so let's move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to New Business. Could I get a motion to approve the street closure for the 200 block of South Merrill on September 6th from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM? Okay, Kevin, in a second. Okay, Jason, second stop. Is there any discussion about this? No, then we can just move on to the vote. So all in favor of approving the street closure for the 200 block of South Merrill on September 6th, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anybody abstaining? No. The next item is to approve using cloud storage as a backup system for city computers. Could I get a motion for that? Okay, Kevin, in a second from Rat. All right, any discussion about this? Yes.
Oh, what did you end up?
Well, John did do some investigation into it. I think the only thing that we're not positive about is how many terabytes that we need in a month. But I think we talked about maybe looking at, I think, 2.5 or something like that initially. And I'll let John explain about that because he did the work on it, if you can.
Sure, so we kind of came up with three alternatives. One is Google Cloud. That would probably be the least expensive. I think I put in 3 terabyte storage capacity, and it came back at $65. Now, I have to investigate that more. I do samples at all, but that's probably the straight forward. I got the Microsoft One Drive, and interestingly enough, all of the licenses that we already paid for on our PCs come with 1 terabyte of storage per user included. I just have to understand how that, how the backup works, how much is kept all on, and how does it affect the hard drive, the backup hard drive and all that type of stuff. But that may be the option that we're already paying for, and might be a little bit of a process. The third option was talking with Morrison Meyerly, who already provides IT and computer support for us. This would be a more sort of comprehensive plan for the city, not just storage, but also IT support. Bringing that sort of all in one umbrella for the entire city instead of having bits and pieces kind of scattered around with the departments. That would obviously be the most expensive option, but even the preliminary numbers that had been given seemed pretty reasonable for what we'd be getting. So I'm waiting to get a formal quote from them, and my expectation is that if we went that route, that would replace everything we're doing and paying them for right now and just bring in over a single agreement. So I think that's worth considering because we do need IT support for some things, and it's hard to have someone in the house who can be dedicated to that or hire somebody who can be dedicated to that for us. So probably more to come next council meeting, and all three of those options. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I had to approve using the cloud storage as a backup system for city computers, and I think we can still approve that even though we don't know what company that we're going to go with. So all in favor of approving using cloud storage as a backup system for the city computers, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that carries. All right, all, the next one is a Resolution 3175 to change the responsible parties on the current staff of the STIP account. So we want to change it to the responsible, change the responsible parties to our current staff. So could I get a motion for that?
Somewhere.
Okay, Mike, in a second. Okay, Doug. All right, are there any questions about this? All right, then all in favor of approving resolution... Oh, wait, it's a resolution, sorry, I made a note to myself. So we have to have a, we have to have a roll call vote for all of these resolutions, so. Jessica, if you want to do the roll call vote for Resolution Number 3175.
Baker?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Dryden?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Sassy?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, that carries. All right, the next item is to get a motion to approve Resolution Number 3176 to approve the wages for active-duty police officers. All right, Clyde, in a second, Doug. Okay. Is there any discussion about this? Yes.
So just curious, so these and the rest of them? Do we have the...
Yes, they are. It's in your packet, and it's under Exhibit A. So each resolution is in there. So Resolution 3176 has the base wage increase, the health insurance increase, the longevity increase, the shift differential increase, and the field officer stipend increase. So they're all in there. All right, so again, we have to have a roll call vote because it's a resolution.
Thompson?
Aye.
Sassy?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Dryden?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
All right, thank you. The next item is to approve Resolution Number 3177 to approve the wages for the Glendale Communication Center employees. Could I get a motion for that? Okay, we've got a motion from Jason, and a second from Rat. Any discussion about that one? It's also in your packet? All right, then we can move to the roll call vote for the Communication Center employees.
Baker?
Aye.
Coon? Dryden?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Sassy?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
All right, the next item is to approve Resolution Number 3178 to approve wages for the Firefighters Association. Could I get a motion for that? Okay, Kevin, in a second from Clyde. Any discussion about the Firefighters Association? Yes.
Just, I just want to make one point clarification. This has nothing to do with me being a part of a volunteer firefighter. So I will be voting on it, but it has nothing to do with me.
Well, you aren't, you aren't a full-time firefighter.
Full-time union firefighter.
Right, that is what this is regarding. Thank you for that clarification. All right, we can move to the roll call vote on 3178.
Thompson?
Aye.
Sassy?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Dryden?
Aye.
Coon? Baker?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next one is to approve Resolution Number 3179 to approve wages for Public Works employees. Could I get a motion for that? Jason, in a second. Okay, we've got a second from Kevin. So any discussion about that? That's also in your packet, and it has all the detail. All right, so again, no discussion, so we could move to the roll call vote.
Baker?
Aye.
Coon? Dryden?
Aye.
Mitchell? Sassy? Thompson?
Okay, thank you. All right, next is to approve Resolution Number 3180 to approve wages for all non-union and non-bargaining employees. Could I get a motion for that? Okay, Mike, in a second, Kevin? Oh, I'm sorry, it was Jason. All right, seconded by Jason. Any discussion about that? All right, let's move to the roll call vote then.
Baker?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Dryden?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Sassy?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, that carries. The next item, I want to explain that I accidentally originally left this off the agenda. And even though I corrected it, and it got put in the packets, and it got corrected on the website, I accidentally left it hanging on the door yesterday. So I just want to make that clear that I feel that this resolution is for elected officials. And I did send a copy of the updated agenda with this on it to the city court today because I thought it was important that I explain that I had missed it. So I feel that we can still consider it tonight. So this is Resolution Number 3181 to approve wage increase for all elected officials. So can I get a motion for that?
Actually, Mayor, may I stop?
Sure.
What did you say that you put the notice for this?
I put the notice for it up on Saturday, but I may, I left that off, so I corrected it on Monday. So it's...
There's been 24-hour notice?
There's been 24-hour notice, but not 48.
I would recommend that there be a special... When does this need to go in place?
Well, we'd like to finish all these up so that we can finish the budgeting stuff with all of the other parts of government, but we could certainly, I would say we could delay it. I don't know, would that slow anything down, John, if we waited on this?
No, I mean, yeah, I completely get what you're saying, John. It would be nice to have it done before the end of the month, because that's when we'll do payroll. It's the last day of this month, whereas the resolution would come back at the beginning of August. But we could either, if you do choose to accept the resolution, you can make it effective back to July 1st. We could either hold off on your paychecks until that decision is made, or we could add the difference to your next paycheck, or, I mean, there's certain ways we could do it.
And it may not get approved, so. So I guess what would you recommend, Mr. Rubus?
I would recommend that it not be voted on tonight because...
Then let's table it till the... Table it till the August 6th meeting.
August 6th?
Oh, is it August 6th? Yes, it is.
Take a motion, Mayor, to table?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
So I just wrote down, we're, let's get a motion.
I'll make a motion to table.
To the August 5th?
The Resolution 3181 to next meeting.
All right, in a second.
I said to the next meeting, so if somebody called a special meeting, if you guys wanted to get it done in July, which is totally up to administration here, then fine, but otherwise, we have a meeting scheduled for August 6th.
And, yeah, if that works easiest for John, assuming it does get passed, then it's definitely...
And it's two weeks, but either you do it next week or wait till August. Whatever works best.
Well, what do you, how do you guys feel about it? Do you feel strongly that you want to vote on this? And I can post it tomorrow, or I can... Well, that won't really work because then it comes up on a Friday.
So what does our Director of Operations, how important is this, this is done in July? I'm kind of putting you on the spot, John, sorry, but I mean, it seems like it's all about about the Resolution 3181, if we need to get it done this month, or if it goes till August, if it'll be a lot more of a headache for the administration of city government. It will be a little bit more.
Well, just because either we'll have to, you know, go back and pay the difference if you do vote in an increase, or we can add that to your next month's paycheck, and then you'll be even. But I don't think it's so bad that we need to call a special.
I agree, I think that would be good not to do, yes.
Okay. All right.
Was there a second, Mayor?
Yes, I believe so. Both those guys seconded it. Okay, so any other discussion about it? Okay, then, all in favor of tabling the approval of Resolution Number 3181 until the August 5th meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anybody abstain? No. All right, so let's get a motion to approve the accounts payable claims from fiscal year 2025 for $119,369.08. Can I get a motion for that? Okay, Jason, in a second, Rat? Okay, all in favor of approving the accounts payable claims for fiscal year 25 of $119,369.08, say aye.
Aye.
The next item is to approve the accounts payable claims for fiscal year 26 of $385,556.60. Can I get a motion for that, Rat? In a second. Okay, Kevin? All in favor of paying the accounts payable claims for fiscal year 26 of $385,556.60, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Yes.
Did you miss the time slots?
Yes, I did, I'm sorry. Well, we'll go back to it. All right, so we're back to New Business, and thank you, Clyde, for keeping me on track. So could I get a motion to approve the options in the time clock, clock application? Okay, Clyde makes a motion, and second, seconded by Kevin. Is there any discussion about the time clock app? Yes, Mike?
Just a question, so what we've done here, what we're trying to do with this motion, then, we have certain options, and we will use them as the city administration feels necessary at that time.
Right.
We're kind of, pardon my analogy, we're kind of loading the gun here, we'll just use what we need.
Right, right. Okay, sure. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the options in the time clock app, say aye. All right. Okay, now we can move to Department Head comments. I guess I'll start with you, Mr. Center, if you have any Department Head comments.
Budget document, so this will now include personnel, well, updated personnel, revenue, and our operating budgets. So this is going to be the opportunity for the folks on the committee to take a close look at what's in there now, decide if they want any additions, subtractions, changes. That will be the process for the next, you know, week or two. And then we're going to start getting things in the final form. But that meeting will also give us a sense of what we have available for capital spending, whether that's purchases or starting to build up our reserves again, just contributing to reserves, not for specific purchases. So those are the two things coming out of the budget. Any questions about that?
Just one, John. As individuals, we've gotten information from the state of Montana on what are individual properties within the community of work. Are they at the point where the county now knows what this city district, what our mill levy is, the value of the mill is?
We have not been formally notified. We usually get that the first Monday in August.
Okay.
However, we do know that our taxable dollars can only increase by 2.11% the next year. So whatever the property values come in, whatever the mills come in, we're still capped at that dollar. And one of the legislative changes this year, and I don't know if it's going to apply for this year, I assume it is, is that instead of reporting our budget in terms of mills, we have to now report it also in terms of dollars. So my expectation is that the dollars will... The total dollar budget will go up a little bit.
The total dollar budget will go up a little bit, the mills will probably go down, because I think the mills will be worth more. But that's just, but at the end of the day, we're limited by that inflationary gap, so. Another two point one seven percent, is that a new change at the legislature or that's previous, we've always? No, we've always had that and it just gets updated every year, it's some prior previously average inflation. Okay, thank you. It's not much.
Any other questions, Mr. Center?